Right, good evening members, good evening ladies and gentlemen. And welcome to this evening's meeting of the full council. In order to assist in the process this evening, I must ask everyone to ensure phones are either switched off or on silent mode. I'm giving everybody a chance to look around, everybody's fine. We would be grateful if you would remain quiet while this meeting is in process. And I would like to remind everyone present that the meeting will be filmed by the council and broadcast live on the internet and will be capable of repeated viewing. So if you're seated in the chamber, and that's anywhere in the chamber, it's possible that the captures, cameras will capture your image. So by your presence, you are deemed to consent to be filmed and to the use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting or for training purposes. And finally, there are no planned fire drills for this evening, so if the fire alarm does sound, please evacuate the building immediately using the emergency exits. Right, we'll move on to item one on our agenda, which is prayers. If you'll remain standing, the chaplain will say prayers for us.
Let us pray. Almighty God, from whom comes every good and perfect gift, grant to those who hold office in this borough of Christchurch the spirit of justice and truth, of wisdom and charity, that mindful of their responsibility and the needs of those they serve, they may promote the true welfare of your people and advance your kingdom on earth through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. And as we are approaching the season of Christmas, a prayer for peace and goodwill at this time. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the message of peace that Christmas brings to a distracted world. We pray that you would give peace among the nations and between nations. Peace in our land, peace in our homes and peace in our hearts as we remember the birth at Bethlehem of the Prince of Peace, Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you. Let's be seated. Right, item one on the agenda is apologies for absence. Do we have apologies tonight?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've had apologies from councillors, Mrs Abbott, Mrs Darren Wilkes, Mrs Phipps, Loths and councillor Watts.
Thank you. Members, item three, oh sorry, councillor David Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Mrs Jones is unwell and sends her apologies.
Thank you. We'll add that to the list. Declarations of interest by members. Members, do you have any declarations of interest in any item on this agenda? Councillor Flag.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's not a pecuniary interest, but I feel in the in ensuring the openness and transparency that item 11 on the agenda, that I am actually a member of the parish council. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you councillor Flag. Councillor Mr Jameson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have the same interest in councillor Flag as the leader.
Thank you councillor Jameson. I'm sure we've noted that down. Item four on the agenda tonight, the minutes to correct, I'm so sorry, to confirm as a correct record the minutes of the meeting from the 30th of October 2018. Do I have a proposer for these minutes? Thank you, leader.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I am aware that members didn't receive these minutes until late this afternoon. I have had the opportunity to be able to read them and I'm happy to propose that they are accepted. But if members aren't happy with the timescale, I'm sure that we can defer it to the next full council to receive those minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, leader. I'll ask for a secondary and then we'll proceed councillor, or deputy leader councillor, Mrs Jameson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm happy to second as stated.
Members, as the minutes have only just been sent round, are we content to receive them today? I don't see any hands going up, so I'm going to assume. Agreed, thank you. Are there any objections or abstentions to those minutes? Thank you, members. Item five, announcements. Right. Any announcements from the leader, chief executive? No, so it looks as though it's down to me. Thank you. I must say that on these occasions, I always feel very bad when I've got pages and pages, but it's only because it's easier to read. And I'm only going to note a few of the engagements that I've done. And in fact, can I point out that I think one page has been missed off, so I have been busier than it looks on the on the agenda. And the first one I want to to just tell you about was the remembrance service. It was 80 years since Kristallnacht and the Bournemouth synagogue made a remembrance service, a Shabbat. And it was so moving because not only were the survivors were there, in fact, from Kristallnacht, although it was 80 years ago, and also there were people who'd come over to this country on kinder transport. So it was, it was like almost seeing history. And it was actually, their stories were quite harrowing. So that was an interesting engagement, which I'm glad the deputy leader escorted me on. So, and then we had the graduation ceremonies and they were great fun. Lots of happy, hopeful young people, and it was really, really good to wish them well. And then on the 11th of November, we obviously had our remembrance services and we had an extra celebration, if you can call it that, a remembrance. Christchurch, like people all over the world, had held a beacon of light event. And that was on the, sorry, on the key, I must get my mouth around it, on the key. And it was in the evening and it was lit up. And then of course we lit the beacon. And that was in remembrance for the centenary of the end of World War One. And it was really well attended. I was very, very pleased to see so many people there. And so we have to thank all the officers and volunteers who organised that. And the names of the dead from Christchurch were actually read out on that occasion. And that again, really makes you think about Christchurch and focus. And then I was going to say, I don't know how to put this, I was at the YMCA Sleep Easy. I didn't sleep out in the cold, but a lot of people did. It was in the middle of November and it was volunteers sleeping out, literally sleeping out in cardboard boxes. It was a jolly cold night, luckily not raining. And they were raising money for funds for the YMCA who do a lot of work to help rough sleepers. And I'm talking about rough sleepers here, the saddest. And they need a lot of help. And the YMCA are very, very proactive in this. So I was really glad to be able to go along. And as I say, I didn't, I didn't sleep out because I chickened out of that, but a lot of people did. And I believe a lot of money was raised. And then on the 5th of December, I was treated to a wonderful lunch at Avon Reach, which is the nursing home down the road from me. And one of the, one of the highlights of the occasion was a bomb surprise, you know, this great big meringue thing, which was set alight by the chef in front of the residents. Now, I have put much to the amusement of the residents. I think a lot of it was horror. But luckily the fire alarms didn't go off. Then we've had the Christmas lights switch on. I've done the Christmas lights in Christchurch and in Hearn and in Burton. But in Hearn and Burton, I'm afraid I had to have help from Father Christmases, which of course was a bit of a cop out, but thank you Father Christmas. And then last night, the engagement that I had last night was the Grange and Sommerford Schools carol service. And that was in the priory, which, so it was going to be lovely anyway. But the children performed so well, they were so moving, you know, it was it was really, really touching. And they have a new music master who really pepped them up a bit. And they did We Three Kings, which is a very old carol, but they did it in the style of Dave Brubeck. So if anybody knows Dave Brubeck, it was very, very good. And then finally, my last note is I'm going to mention somebody whose last meeting this is. Because I do know that our reporter Katie from the Bournemouth Echo is leaving the Bournemouth Echo. So thank you Katie for all the faithful reporting. And I'm very glad you've got your future all mapped out. Thank you. That's my announcements. Item six, questions from members of the public. Okay, item seven, petitions from members of the public. Again, we haven't got any. Item eight, questions by members of the council. Turning over. Thank you. And item nine, committee minutes. Right, we have the committee minutes. We have the committee minutes in front of us, I hope. Can I have a proposer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Happy to propose that we receive the minutes over the last cycle of committee meetings.
Thank you, leader. And secondar, deputy leader.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Happy to second as said.
Thank you. Members, are we content to receive these minutes? Are there any objections or abstentions on these minutes? Councillor Jones.
I take it we are going to be able to discuss the recommendations. Thank you.
Right. Now, I've got down a C on the community committee. And I believe because councillor Phipps is unavoidably absent. And I think councillor Phipps would like me to say that this is the first full council meeting she's ever missed. So we miss her. I think councillor Geary, are you going to propose the recommendations from this committee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes indeed. Members, this is an excellent proposal which maintains the council's track record of providing good quality open space for local people to enjoy whilst protecting the environment. I'm very pleased to propose a recommendation as set out in minute 175, community committee meeting minutes of the 21st of November. I believe I do have a second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Geary. Councillor.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I thought it was the other way around, but yes, I'm happy to second.
Right, does any member wish to speak? This is minute number 175, a new park for Christchurch. I don't know who was first here, because Peter. Councillor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. But councillor Hall did have his hand up before. I'm happy to wait at him.
I think, I think the decision has been made. Go ahead councillor Jones.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I don't think anybody can object to creation of new open space and preserving open space that exists and safeguarding it. But Madam Mayor, I do have concerns about this particular proposal. Because this isn't just conventional public open space. It isn't even safeguarding something as is, such as creating, naming something as, for example, as an area of outstanding natural beauty. This is creating an artificial something called a suitable alternative natural green space, SANG. Now, this is part of the heathland mitigation scheme. And I won't go into the principles of this at the moment. I'll just refer members to the excellent article in The Spectator dealing with a bird brain scheme, which deals with the unsuitability of the principles of this. But what I particularly am concerned with, and if I raise the points, I'd hope the officers may be able to answer them. We'll start, we seem to be moving ahead rather more rapidly with consultation in that we are, it doesn't seem to me that we are fully consulting the public. And after all, this is something we're supposed to be doing for the benefit of the public, that they may, if they wish, disport themselves without infringing the delicate heathland. And there may be objections and one particular concern that I have is that it is stated that Natural England are in favour unequivocally of the scheme. Now, I understand that a definite final response from Natural England has not yet been received. And I would be welcome, I would welcome confirmation from the officer that a written response from Natural England has been received. The second point that I have, and it's a concern. We should be looking to protect, preserve and create public open space on its own merits. But there is a concern that this is actually being done so as to facilitate housing development. Either the ASTA scheme or the Bargate scheme, whatever it's called, or other housing developments in the borough. Now, again, if this is being done to facilitate housing development, that in itself to me is a concern because it should be the other way around. The open space should be created on its own merits. These are my concerns and I would be very happy if the officer can reassure me on these. And if so, then I would consider supporting the proposal. But at the moment, I have doubts. A about the general efficacy of these schemes. B, as members will know, because I've said it ad nauseam, that what you have got here is a job creation scheme for officers and a way of transferring money from the productive sector of the economy to an unproductive sector with friction in the middle. And the, otherwise the.
Councillor, councillor, can we have less of those views about officers? Thank you. We will ask Mr Barnes to answer.
Thank you through you, Madam Mayor. I think the two substantive questions that councillor Jones has asked is first of all, in relation to Natural England. As I mentioned at the committee, when it was, when it met in November, we have had extensive discussions with Natural England about the proposals. We have had a draft of Natural England's support. And we've, we've sent that back to them because there were a few matters we just wanted to have corrected or clarified, should I say. And we're expecting that final written advice in the next few days. But suffice to say that from the early draft that I've seen, Natural England welcomed the proposals and fully support them. The second substantive question asked by councillor Jones is I think in terms of what is the, why are we doing this? Why is that proposal on the table? And I think first and foremost, it's to create a better public open space for people than exists at the moment. I think the report was quite clear in setting out that there is currently some land, which is currently only used by a small number of people, which we can be released for wider public use and enjoyment, as well as protecting the environment and hopefully improving biodiversity in the area. So if I can reassure councillor Jones on that point, that that, that is the substantive reason we're doing this. I think the ability to use it as a SANG is a bonus. But it has, and just to, just to pick up directly councillor Jones's question, it has absolutely no relation or connection with the Bargate planning application. Now, it could be that at some future point down the years, if there are development sites that come forward that require a SANG and don't have, have one, then the council could be approached to, to be asked if it could use some of its SANG provision, if you like, for those developments. But there's absolutely nothing on the table at the moment. And as I say, that's a secondary consideration. I think that the committee were unanimous in supporting the fact that they want to leave a lasting legacy, a positive legacy for the people of Christchurch when Christchurch Borough Council ceases to exist on the end of March 2019. So hopefully that answered councillor Jones's question.
Thank you. Mr Barnes. Councillor Hall.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Firstly, if I may, I'd like to thank Mr Barnes for answering questions I sent him very promptly. I do appreciate that. We have a great asset in having Stanpit Marsh in our borough. I've had the privilege of using this special area all of my life. It has over 140 species of flora, as well as hundreds of birds visiting every year. Over 300 species and subspecies have been listed. I have witnessed the kingfisher catching fish in the Purewell Stream. It seems that this scheme is being railroaded through on just half minutes, which have not been ratified. However, Madam Mayor, I perhaps can support a coastal country park, but not support a SANG, which is suitable alternative natural green space for the following reasons. There's been no official confirmation from Natural England, and they're the authority that will make the final decision. No planning application has been submitted. I understand to date that none of the organisations such as the RSPB, Dorset Wildlife Trust, Fostham, Friends of Stanpit Marsh, CHOP, and the Stanpit Marsh Advisory Committee have not been contacted. I also believe it could be contrary to some of our established planning policies. By having a SANG, more people will be encouraged to use this area without providing any additional toilet facilities. Also, there'll be no extra free car parking spaces. In my opinion, too many additional footpaths are being proposed. Also, I believe that methane gas may be a problem. This proposal may contravene some of the existing covenants, especially the ones around the Astree Meadows. I'm also very concerned, due to the very short timetable, no public consultation will take place. A SANG means unrestricted public access with plenty of space for dogs to exercise freely off the leash. Members should be aware that these salt marshes have formed over the last 3,000 years. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I cannot support the recommendation because I believe it would be detrimental effect on this wonderful area. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hall. Councillor Bunge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If councillor Hall can switch his microphone off. Thank you. What isn't included in the report is that members that went to the presentation by the officers and also in the community committee had concerns. And members asked to see the officer's correspondence with Natural England. And we were told that that would be received. We hadn't received it. It's a little bit like the Attorney General not wanting to publish his documents on Brexit, I think. I would also expect consultations to have taken place with Dorset Wildlife Trust, the RSPB, and other interested parties, as already mentioned by councillor Hall. But that doesn't appear to have been done. There is nothing in the report about it. To call this a country park in one breath and a SANG in the next is not credible. A country park has rules and regulations regarding dogs on leads, et cetera, and what people can and cannot do. A SANG is intended as a public open space to draw dog walkers away from heathland and triple SIs. And with dogs allowed to run free on a SANG, it's difficult to see how this would appeal to people that want to go there and picnic. So I think there's a dichotomy there between what is a park and what is a SANG. Toilets were an issue, and a very big issue, because at the moment, it's proposed that one male and one female toilet inside Two Rivers Meet will be the only facilities available. Well, it's a long walk from down at the other end of Stanpit to Two Rivers Meet, if you're in need urgently. We were assured that this would be kept watch on, and if necessary, toilets might be considered in the future. But let's be honest, we won't be here to consider that. As of the end of March coming April, we will not be able to watch that. And we do not know whether the new authority will even consider it. It's a very difficult situation. In principle, it's a good idea. But at the moment, I think there are too many loopholes and unanswered questions that members need to know before they make a final decision. I want to see what Natural England finishes up saying. We asked about the bonfire, for instance, and various other activities that take place down there. We were assured by the officers they were safe, but we haven't seen that in writing from Natural England or anyone else. It only takes one person to complain to Natural England about the environmental issues of having a bonfire there and fireworks to stop the whole thing. We need some reassurances, Madam Mayor, before this goes through. I support it in principle, but I cannot vote for it tonight on that basis. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Notte.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have no argument in principle regarding the contents of this report, but I'm however concerned to the pace and progress of this project from concept to recommendation and completion by April 2019, without the checks and balances derived from public consultation. As Ward councillor, I've not been able to gauge opinion from my community and from the community I represent regarding the resultant effects on the area in terms of potential unintended consequences. If the level of discussion with the community had been similar as to that undertaken to advise Natural England, then I would be less concerned. I had though, had considerable concerns expressed as the lack of detail in respect of the infrastructure requirements required to support an extra 400 dwellings in our town centre. Similarly, my concerns revolve around the absence of real detail as to the management of flora fauna, issues, control over usage, management and maintenance, as well as protection necessary to the Stanpit Marsh, now one of the most important nature reserves in the area. Consequently, Madam Mayor, I'll be abstaining from supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Notte. Councillor Davies.
Actually, my fellow ward councillors rather taken the wind out of my sails, madam, so I'm not saying anything.
Oh, councillor Davies, I'm so sorry. Councillor Mrs Spittle, I'm sure you can say something for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And may I thank the officers actually for coming up with such a wonderful idea, which I, seeing to be a lone voice, really do support. Because this is, it means actually one of the gems of Christchurch is going to be preserved for at least 80 years and probably further from any development. With regard to the facilities, those of us who have actually walked along here quite frequently realise it's not a long walk. There are other walks in the borough that haven't got near, haven't got toilets, et cetera, nearer the start of the walks, for example, St Catherine's Hill. In my own ward. And I am surprised at the concerns raised concerning a SANG because it is known that there are going to be other developments coming forward. And the officers have actually had a foresight of dealing with this in advance. With regard to National, Natural England, I've dealt with them quite a bit, actually, with regard over St Catherine's Hill, et cetera. And I know that they are extremely busy and very short-staffed. In fact, only recently, the national figures were announced, and I believe there's only something like 2,000 actual work people who are employed by Natural England. So it's not surprising that they haven't had a chance to reply, except I do know that if they had any objection, they would have certainly have replied immediately because that, they are there to protect beautiful areas and of natural conservation. And so they would have replied if they were going to object. So I feel this is an ideal situation, which is going to encourage the people to take further exercise, enjoy the area of the harbour, which also is a triple SI. And I do applaud the officers for dealing with this in such a quick, efficient time. And I am assured, having, knowing our countryside officers, that they will ensure that the area is well looked after and will protect all the various species. So I feel it's a win-win. So I apologise if I may have upset a few people, but I certainly will be enjoying this with my family in that when it is open to the public. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Spittle. Councillor Mrs Jameson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm supporting what councillor Spittle has said. I fully support this idea. I think it's fantastic. It's going to protect the area for 80 years, I believe. I've spoken to a number of people who have contacted me over the last week or so. And they, I haven't met anybody yet who has said it's a bad idea. So I of course fully support it, et cetera.
Thank you, councillors. I'm going to take the liberty of actually reading what the recommendation before the council was from Community Committee. The Community Committee approves the proposal to create a coastal country park. And as a key decision, makes a formal recommendation to the council. And council require that the Community Committee ensures that appropriate community engagement is carried out, that agreement to the proposals is confirmed in writing by Natural England, and a planning application is submitted for the designation of the land as a SANG, and that an update on these matters is reported to the Community Committee in January 2019. Mr Barnes, I'm correct in thinking that that's what's before the council?
Yes, Madam Mayor, that is correct.
Right, thank you. I just wanted to get that clear in my own mind. Councillor Jones, you've already spoken. Have you got something to add to this? Yes, do.
Thank you. Can I ask the officer therefore? Can it be clarified? What is the effect, what would be the effect of a positive vote this evening? If it's being sent to Community Committee to ensure that there's adequate consultation? If there is a rider in the recommendation from Communities Committee that we wait for the actual hard evidence from Natural England and the other concerns that have been made? It seems to me that we are actually not making a final decision because of course what the Community Committee proposes must come back to the next council.
That's right, isn't it?
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor. I think you are either agreeing to the proposal or not. I think part B is requiring that the Community Committee does certain things to safeguard the launch, if you like, of the process. So I think it is asking for an affirmative decision or not, whatever is indicated to members.
Yes, thank you, Mr Barnes, with the caveats as they're put in in item B. Councillor Barth wanted to speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've heard the concerns mentioned around the room by many members with regards to the process and consultation with members of the public. One thing that hasn't seemed to have been voiced is the benefits of this with regards to providing the vital housing that we need in our area. And there is always an issue with regards to providing housing by ensuring that we have suitable SANGs, natural open green spaces for people living in those houses to use to protect our heathland. And I believe that the benefits of this, coupled with all of the issues that have been put down to ensure that the concerns that have been mentioned are covered, proves that we should be supporting it. We have a lot of concern by many people in our area about the state of our high street. And a lot of the opportunities that exist to provide housing within the town centre, which will regenerate the high street and allow for our high street to become the vibrant place that it used to be and currently is suffering from the fact that people aren't actually using the shops and therefore a lot of them are standing empty. This gives an opportunity to actually provide the houses which will make people be in the town centre, which will provide the opportunity for those retail units to thrive. And I for one feel that we should be supporting this in order to facilitate not only housing in our area, but also facilitate the protection of this area for the future, for our residents to enjoy both those who live here currently and those who might like to come to be part of our town. So I will be supporting this.
Thank you councillor Barth. Councillor Spittle, were you indicating, because you have already spoken? You're what, sorry? Oh. Which you later rely on in court. Yes, thank you councillor. Well, at my discretion councillor, yes, if it's an important point we've missed. Thank you.
Eternally grateful. One thing, having been, as I'm one of the few who have been in, living in the borough for an extremely long time, but I'm sure that the gentleman on my right will also confirm that I am correct, that it has been mentioned about the possibility of methane. Now, it is true that the the golf course was actually built on reclaimed land. And back in the the late 60s or early 70s, there was an incident involving methane. But that, as I would remind people, is over 50 years. And so the possibility of any problem particularly arising in the open air concerning methane is extremely, if not impossible, to occur. So I, yes, I see that certain people are shaking their head. In a confined space, as I said, there was an incident, I won't go into detail because it's rather embarrassing. But, you know, I do feel that with a golf course on, which is not going to necessarily be too interrupted, that the possibility of an accident recurring regarding methane is extremely unlikely. But no doubt there may be others who would disagree with me. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Spittle. That was an interesting piece of local knowledge. Members, I think we've had a very full debate. Councillor Jones, you have spoken twice, unless this is something totally different?
Which may be moved at any time? Madam Mayor, I have listened to the concerns of the ward councillor. And at the risk of giving him a heart attack, I agree with them. I have heard the concerns also, and it seems to me that there is genuine feeling among a number of members that this is being brought forward too quickly without the appropriate consultation, as has, I think, been accepted that this isn't the possibly the best way of doing it. I would therefore suggest, Madam Mayor, that rather than deciding on it tonight, and as we've heard, other things are going to be taken forward and there are going to be further steps taken, that this matter be deferred until the next meeting to give the opportunity for further consultation and for the concerns that have been raised tonight to be aired. It may be, of course, that I won't have a second, in which case we'd be in trouble, but I think it should be considered. Thank you.
So councillor Jones, can I ask you what you are proposing? A deferral?
Thank you. That this matter be deferred until the next meeting of council.
And are you asking for a second for that?
If anybody so wishes, but I'll be quiet.
Have we got a second for that? Deferral of the motion of the well, councillor Hall.
Madam Mayor, I'm happy to second just for the debate, because I think it's interesting to know the outcome.
Councillor Jameson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two points which I'd like to consider. Firstly, if this matter is deferred, would that affect the would that affect the possible outcome? And can we get it in in time? And the second point is the evidence of methane being of little possibility. I just wonder where that evidence comes from? Because we have methane that comes out of the ground thousands of years after it has been formed. After the short term that it has been there percolating from the reclaimed wasteland, waste disposal land, I think is just in its infancy and not about to disappear. So I'd just like some, just to know where that evidence comes from, because it's an important one. Thank you.
All right, thank you, councillor. Prior to that, I'm going to ask Mr Richard Jones to give some advice to the council on it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just in relation to the procedural motion that's been put, councillor Jones may indeed move that, it has been seconded. Just for clarification, if that is put to the vote, when it is put to the vote, if it is supported, the item is deferred. It doesn't follow the normal amendments process. It's a procedural motion, that the matter would then be deferred and it would not be debated further this evening. Just wanted to make that point clear. But obviously councillor Jameson asked some other points.
Mr Barnes, did you want to come back on one of these points?
I'm happy to clarify for you, Madam Mayor, that if the item was deferred, I don't think that that would give us enough time to complete the project before the end of Christchurch Borough Council. So by deferring, you're effectively deciding to dilute in the project. And just to answer one of the technical points, as councillor Jameson has mentioned it, and he isn't the first person, as mentioned in my answer to councillor Hall by email earlier this week, who asked the same question about methane. Methane levels are periodically monitored. The amounts that are coming out of the ground are so small that it poses no risks to the public. And if you think about it, we'd be killing a lot of golfers right now because obviously golfers already use the space that we're intending. So if I can give some reassurance on the methane issue, that's probably one obstacle out of the way. Thank you.
Right. Oh, excuse me, members, we... Councillor Jameson. We have a proposal for a deferral. Is there any debate on the deferral? Councillor Otte.
Madam Mayor, I've got no intention to vote for a deferral on this item. As far as I'm concerned, the points that I were making, I'm sure will be taken up by the officers and those members who are advocating this project in seeing that those people who should be involved are involved so that any decision taken by the unelected body called Natural England can have the substantial support of consultation from the public. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Otte. Councillor Spittle, you're talking... Oh, oh, sorry, councillor Davis, how could I miss you?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. I thought I would try and have the last word there. Members, this is a golden opportunity for this council in its current form to leave a legacy of open parkland for future generations of residents and visitors alike to use and enjoy in perpetuity, thus protecting its heritage and environment. I have no hesitation in supporting the proposal to create a coastal country park on land as set out in the papers in front of you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Davis. Councillor Spittle.
I shall be brief as well. It's just actually to support the two ward councillors and to confirm that I see very little point in deferring this item because it'll only delay, it'll cause problems for the officers who, although they have been tupied over to the new authority, it will cause them a lot of extra work in the later months. So I will not support deferment. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Spittle. Councillor Banji.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have other projects in the borough which will not be completed before we cease to exist next year. But the officers have told me those will carry on anyway and will be completed under the new authority because the contracts are there. So I don't see that a little bit of a delay now causes a problem that the park will never be completed. What I do have a concern with is that there is a lack of consultation with the powers that need to be consulted with and with the residents. And, you know, methane gas aside, I mean, in the late 1980s, there was an explosion inside Two Rivers Mead. And since then, Two Rivers Mead has had vents fitted all over the place to ensure that doesn't happen again. Vents are fitted all round the car parking area to leach any methane gas off. So we can't just dismiss it because if there was an incident, the new authority presumably would be responsible. So there are things to be considered. Also, we mentioned the toilets earlier. Two Rivers Mead, the only facility, we don't know in two years' time whether Two Rivers Mead will be there or whether it will be under private ownership. We just don't know because we won't have control. So there is a problem that needs to be looked at while we still have control to do it. I think deferment would not be a problem, and I tend to support it at this stage because I think we need these answers from our SPB, Dorset Wildlife Trust, et cetera, before we go ahead. And we need to see the definitive answer from Natural England.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Barth.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't support deferral because I feel that if we defer it, it probably won't happen. I'd like to ask the officers to just clarify a couple of points that have been raised. Consultation presumably will happen because a planning application will have to go before this council and that will give ample opportunity for members of the public to be consulted. Number one, is that right? And number two, just wanted clarification on what the councillor asked with regards to if we do defer it and then make a decision at next for council, can it still be then carry on into our new BCP council? Or will the process actually not happen because of time running out?
Thanks. Thank you, Mr Barnes. Could you answer?
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor. First of all, in terms of the consultation point, it was discussed quite thoroughly at the Community Committee as to we just didn't have the time to carry out extensive consultation, which is why the term in the recommendation talks about appropriate community engagement. There's been some unofficial community engagement with some of the groups that have been mentioned this evening. But one of the things that we're waiting for is for council to make the decision to go ahead. And then we can begin that engagement. We don't want to put the cart before the horse. So I think that was also explained at Community Committee. And I hope that members don't get the wrong end of the stick here. We've got, we're ready to press the button on that tomorrow morning. So it's all been prepared. And as I say, I think I adequately explained it at Community Committee. And I'm glad you've given me the opportunity to remind members of what was said and what was agreed. With regards to the issue of deferring, I, first of all, there are some tenders that we would have to issue fairly swiftly in order to be able to procure the works that would be needed to set up the space initially. And if we deferred it, we would be in a position where if we then went out to tender, those tenders wouldn't come back until such time as the new authority was in place. And at that point, I can give you absolutely no guarantees whatsoever that the new authority would decide to continue with this project. So, yeah, I think the idea of taking it to community and putting it before members was to say to members, this is your opportunity to be in control of what happens. Other than that, we can't give any guarantees. And again, as I said at Community Committee, it's up to members to decide whether they want to do it or not. We've come up with this proposal. You know, ideally, it would, an idea that sort of came out over a year ago, but it didn't. It's an incident of timing really, and it's the place that we're in. So no one from the officer's side is trying to railroad members here, but this is the situation that we're in. And as I say, I can't give any guarantees as to what would happen if we were to defer. So I hope that answers your question, councillor.
Councillor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In summation, I'll try and deal with a couple of points that have come up. It's important to get this right, therefore it's important to consult. And it's very important to see what Natural England have to say. The other point is that I find it very interesting that some members who in the past have been very supportive and saying what a wonderful thing the new council will be are now saying it's very important to get this done before the new council because it might not happen. Madam Mayor, I have proposed deferral. I think it would be advantageous to do so, and I move.
Thank you, members. We're first going to vote on the deferral. So those in favour of deferring?
Two, Madam Mayor.
Those against?
Thirteen, Madam Mayor.
Any abstentions?
Two.
All right. So we have that to the other.
Madam Mayor, would you like me to just explain where we are now? So that motion, that procedural motion is lost. It was originally proposed by councillor Geary, seconded by councillor Davis, as set out on page 23 of your agenda in minute 175. So the words on 175 that you read out earlier is the motion that's before you now.
Right, members, we're going to go straight to the vote on the original. All those in favour?
Fourteen, Madam Mayor.
Those against?
Could I have my vote recorded, please?
Three, Madam Mayor.
Abstentions?
And one.
Councillor Otte. So that's covered. Thank you, members. And can I congratulate the councillors on a very good debate on that issue? Resources Committee, I think we've got to, which is E. Consider the recommendation arising from that committee. Councillor Hall, you're going to propose this recommendation, I believe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to propose the recommendation as set out on the agenda.
Thank you. Councillor, Mrs Jameson, you're going to second?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, this proposal has come forward. It is, it's an actual fact. We have to adopt what is proposed because we have to... I'm sorry, I've lost my place. I'm not very good at reading. We have no option as we have a duty to cooperate. And should we refuse to pay this amount, the matter would be taken to the Secretary of State. We, on the BCP LGR programme, it's, originally their forecast was 11.8 million spend on the forecast. We're nowhere near that, and I'm very happy to second this motion as set out.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor. Do any members wish to speak on this item? Councillor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I cannot support this. I know that we are told we have no option, but as I've said on numerous occasions in planning, I don't like it. I am not going to vote for it, not when I see that other councils far from acting as responsibly as this council has acted, or shall we say perhaps not acting quite as responsible. We will be responsible as counter taxpayers in Christchurch for the actions of the new authority. I am not going to support giving this borough's hard-earned money, carefully stewarded money, well-looked-after money into the black hole that looks like being the new Greater Bournemouth Council. Thank you.
Councillor Banji.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I have some sympathy with the councillor's statements. When I look at the recommendations, item B, Bournemouth, Christchurch and Paul Shadow Authority request into a enter into a service level agreement to continue with operational delivery of those services being transferred at a similar level and cost equal to the amount identified and anticipated for these services. And yet we're told we can only be guaranteed that our refuse collection with Dorset Waste Partnership is for one year only after the transfer of authority. We don't know what will happen after that. So how can we ask for a guarantee on this? I object to giving any money to Bournemouth. But, you know, we've already been told, it's already in writing, that Dorset Waste Partnership is guaranteed for one year only. Do we want to revert back to a fortnightly collection for everything that Bournemouth have? What was it they found there?
Councillor, I think you're rather straying from the point of this particular issue, so...
I don't think we should be paying any money to anybody on this. We need to look after our own borough first. And I'm also concerned on the preset that we are discussing under this item, that the preset must have enough welly in it to build up some reserves for the new town council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Spittle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, I apologize, I was still writing my notes. Once again, this has given the opportunity for certain councillors or members to come out with negativity and also an opportunity to attack what is the inevitable that's going to happen in later, next year. What I did find interesting was this article, which unfortunately I haven't got with me, but I can remember the figures. It shows this very small proportion that Christchurch and Dorset have to pay in relation to our neighbours. And that shows the size of the two other authorities. I apologize if certain people are shaking their heads, but I do then doubt about their mathematical ability. But it certainly does show, it puts everything in perspective of our size. But also, I'd like my predecessor, I just missed the point because I did write my notes down, unfortunately. But it's, as I said, and I am surprised at the small amount that certain councillors are also quibbling, bearing in mind the huge amount of costs that this borough had to meet with regard to court costs earlier this year.
Thank you, councillor Spittle. Councillor Hall, you wish to speak?
Madam Mayor, just very briefly to thank first of all the vice chairman for taking the minoting for me last time. But also, it's a statutory duty. And it's been done very, very fairly and accurately, so we're all paying in the same proportion, so I'm supporting.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Firstly, I have a question. Could the officers please just clarify the proportions each council are paying? I know it's in the papers somewhere, but I think it might be useful for us to hear those. And secondly, this is statutory. It's something we need to do.
Mr Milner, can you come in on that, please?
Yes, I can, Madam Mayor. Yes, there is on page 25, I think it is, the relative proportions for the 1819 contribution. As you can see, Christchurch and Dorset Council, 421,000 each. Bournemouth, 3.3 million, and Paul, 2.6 million. Was there a second question there?
Thank you, Mr Milner. I don't think we have any more speakers, so I think we can safely go to the vote on this. All those in favour?
Fifteen, Madam Mayor.
Against?
Two.
Abstentions? Thank you. That's...
Madam Mayor, may I have my dissent noted, please?
Your vote recorded? Yes. Thank you, councillors. Item ten, community governance review. I'm going to ask councillor Barth to introduce this. As although I led the working party, I don't want to do it from here. So councillor Barth, could you please propose? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The paper in front of you is to consider the assets that the task and finish group have been looking at with regard to establishing the two new local councils, which was the setup of those councils was agreed in August. The assets that have been recommended by the task and finish group to be transferred to the Christchurch Town Council and to the Highcliff and Walkford Neighbourhood Council has come from an awful lot of work that has been done not only by the task and finish group, but also by our officers, who brought forward all of the various legality and financial aspects and management aspects of the proposed assets. And the assets that we looked at came from a lot of consultation, or not consultation, but input by residents groups, some of whom are here today, and members of the public and councillors. And as you can see from the paper at the back, there were an awful lot of assets that we considered. And the parameters around our consideration were mindful of the capacity of a new council and two new councils which are being set up, and their capacity to actually take on the management of various aspects of local life when it is a new organisation and as yet it has yet to actually be set up. And so we didn't want to burden them with too much, too many assets and too much management prior to actually inception, because it obviously has to be managed in a calm and controlled manner. The councils, once they are set up, can of course look towards taking on further assets. But we did look very carefully. In the paper, you'll see at three point five, the way that we considered all of the assets, and those were the parameters, the four parameters that we looked at. Things that were really important were maintaining the historical and ceremonial traditions of our town, and many residents and councillors alike have stressed the importance of that. And so therefore, we looked at those aspects of our local life. The allotments, which are a statutory duty of the councils to take on, are all being transferred over. And I know that we've got residents here tonight who are involved with the allotments, and I'm sure that they will be reassured as to their future because they will be being transferred to the local councils. I feel that something that's important tonight to mention is that any resident in the area can apply to be on the new parish councils, the town centre council and the neighbourhood council of Highcliff. And I think that all councillors should be encouraged to go out to their residents and try to ensure that we have a really good cross-section of our communities, putting their names forward to be part of these new authorities, so that they can represent all views. And the sometimes myth that councils, which are in effect parish councils, are like the vicar of Dibley type setups, do not actually reflect what we will end up having in our town and in our neighbourhood, and that they will represent all residents from all walks of life. And I think it's our duty as councillors to encourage our residents to find out more about that role and actually get involved in putting their names forward and being active within their communities. So I'm sure if there's any questions, the officer who are here can answer them. But I think that we've considered everything. You have in front of you another paper setting out very clearly on the reverse the assets that are being scheduled. The other thing, oh, I didn't mention, was the precept. We were trying to keep the precept down so that our residents weren't having to pay too much in the way of additional council tax for the for these councils. And therefore, the precepts have been kept to a reasonable level by the assets that we are transferring or proposing to be transferred. Obviously, it's for members to decide where they go with that. So I'll leave it there and leave it to you to debate. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Barth. Councillor Hall, I think you're...
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'm very happy to second councillor Claire Barth's very eloquent report. Thank you.
Before we before we ask to speak on the item, we've got a note here, can I bring to your attention that the schedule of assets, this is on the recommendations A, schedule of assets are set out in appendix one, two of this report, excluding those shown as play areas. I believe that is because we're still working on the play areas. Is that correct? Yes, I think we've got that in front of us. Thank you. Well, we've got a proposal and a proposer and seconda. Councillor Jameson, you wish to speak?
I wish to ask a question, Madam Mayor, with regards to play areas. As a function of a town, a town council or a neighbourhood council or a parish council, then they have the opportunity to have play areas within their curtilage. If they don't take them on, they will become, I would assume, the responsibility of the emerging authority. May I ask if that is the case, or is it the intention for them to be transferred?
Councillor Jameson, I'm not proposing to answer myself, although this did come up in the task and finish group. I'm going to hand it to Mr Jones to answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On page thirty-eight of your agenda, paragraph thirteen, sorry, three thirteen, three point one three, and three point one four, it outlines the issues in relation to the play areas. They are currently out to contracts for refurbishment. That that work will not complete before the first of April, and there are a number of legal issues and procurement issues which would make that transfer now very difficult, and an obligation on the new councils to oversee those refurbishments and the procurement and the payment of those refurbishment works. The advice from from legal and from the services that that would not be an appropriate time to transfer those. So you're right, they would at that point transfer to Bournemouth, Christchurch and Paul, and the discussions then could take place at a future date in terms of transferring those. There is included in the figures in the budget, oh, sorry, in the anticipated sum, an amount equivalent for running those play areas for year one, should that should that transfer take place during the first year of the of the new councils.
Councillor Jameson, does that answer the question?
Could I, could I, Madam Mayor, could I just come back then with the the last sentence in paragraph three point one four, which perhaps could say are completed with the prior agreement of Bournemouth, Paul and Christchurch, Bournemouth, Christchurch and Paul, or prior, so that it's agreed now, rather than agreeing agreeing something in the future, which may or may not be agreed?
Madam Mayor, we don't have that agreement from Bournemouth, Christchurch and Paul. The council doesn't actually exist at the moment. I think Judith is actually, Mrs Plumley is actually indicating to speak, so she may wish to to add something to that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to clarify, that decision has already been made by this council when we made the decision with regard to the play areas and the refurbishment project, that they would be transferred to the town and parish councils on completion.
So, thank you, thank you. Councillor, councillor Jones, I think so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to clarify, this isn't a speech on the motion, it's a question to the officer. And I would say that I would like to add my thanks for the incredible amount of work that he's done, because it cannot have been easy. But can you just clarify that when the proposal, the motion says should apply or come forward to members of the public, what should be made clear is that it is not a question of being co-opted onto the council or being accepted, it is a question of offering themselves for election so that their views, actions, policies, et cetera, may be tested in the same way as all of us have had our views tested in the elections.
Councillor Hilliard?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, a couple of questions, please, to the officer. First of all, with no cash reserves transferred, please, can you clarify how the parish councils will operate from day one? And the second question is, referring to the figures in seven point five, again, can the officer clarify what those transferred service costs are and also the additional operation costs in basic terms? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In terms of the, refer to paragraph seven point five on page forty-two of your agenda, the line that's transferred service costs, those are, that is the cost of the services that are on the reverse of your sheet that's been handed out, for clarity. It is included within the schedule, appendix one, but for ease of reference, I've pulled those out. So those figures of one thousand, sorry, one hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and forty-five and fifty-nine thousand and five pounds reflected are the total sums on the reverse of that sheet. In terms of reserves, the additional operating costs is a is a figure that we've calculated, that we assume the new authorities will use to set their own budget. So we're not setting the budget for the new councils. We set an amount that we believe that the new authorities will need, and it is for those two new councils to set their budget. Within that, additional operating costs, we have allocated a sum or a contingency of approximately ten percent of the cost as a contingency which the new councils could put into reserves or could use for other purposes. This is not about this council setting the budget, though, for the new councils. This is about setting an anticipated preset amount which the new councils will set their budget from.
Councillor Colin Jameson?
Yeah, sorry to go on about this, Madam Mayor, but I believe we need to be accurate in what we're saying. And we've just been told by the officer that it has been agreed by this council that the assets would be transferred once the work has been done. That's my understanding of what was just said, which is not what is reflected in paragraph three point one four.
Thank you, Miss...
If I could just comment, I think the wording really sort of means that it would be a different way of transferring it, because it would have to be transferred under the normal conferencing process, and that obviously would require the Bournemouth, Paul and Council, Bournemouth, Paul and Christchurch Council to actually sign the transfer, and it would go under the normal conferencing process. So I think that paragraph was meant to reflect that process, rather than it going under an order, as would be the case with the other sides.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I seek therefore clarification on the word could be transferred, which to me means that it also may not be transferred. So it says, it is not recommended that the play areas are transferred at this stage. These sites could be transferred once the work, once the works are completed. But that's not what we're being told here with the agreement of Bournemouth, Christchurch and Paul Council. So if Bournemouth, Christchurch and Paul Council do not agree, then they wouldn't be transferred, because that's what it says in the document.
Yes. If I could just clarify that point?
Thank you.
I think it's more a case of the parish councils, because the parish councils obviously would also have to agree to sign the transfer. So it might be the case that they might, because the parish council would be an independent body then with their own members, it would be up to them to decide whether or not to go ahead and accept the transfer that was being offered to them.
I've got councillor Notch, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hi, technical question, but it's just dawned on me that perhaps I don't understand this as well as I should. Can I just ask, please, that for the purpose of simplicity, I assume that the costs which are under seven point five would be the costs to the public taxpayer of five hundred thousand pounds approximately? Go with me for a little bit, don't argue about the figures. Say five hundred thousand pounds a cost in terms of running these councils. And that cost is actually the responsibility of the council tax base in total. That's correct, correct, isn't it?
Madam Mayor, yes.
Thank you.
Subject to...
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I think I need to just clarify. Paragraph seven point four does make reference to a harmonisation period where the sum, and the reason I've split out the costs in seven point five for the transferred service costs, there will be during the harmonisation period, that figure will be removed, will be reduced off the BCP precept for the Christchurch area. But at the end of that harmonisation period, councillor Notch, you are correct, inflation, putting aside inflation and other rises, then the total cost of that will fall upon the two new councils and the taxpayers for those two councils.
So just to clarify that, the full cost will fall on the tax, council tax base of those areas included in the two new town councils, the precept?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councillor Jones, you were indicating?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I just ask the officer, very, very roughly, and I should know this, and I apologize, what are the number, what's the number of taxpaying households in the in the borough at the moment, in the borough as it presently stands, less if possible Burton and Hearn?
Can, can anybody answer that off the cuff?
Madam Mayor, rather than answer the question roughly, if you give me a few minutes to actually look it up, I believe the question is for the whole of Christchurch. Is that the question? The tax base for Christchurch?
Through you, Madam Mayor, the question is for the number of households within the lump borough, if you like, taking out the two already existing parishes.
The tax base, rather than, yeah, bandy, the tax base is different to the number of properties. I can't tell you the number of properties, I haven't got the information, but I can tell you what is the bandy equivalent, which is the tax base which is used to calculate the precept for Christchurch. I understand what you want me to do is then then remove the properties that are actually in Hearn and Burn, in terms of the tax base.
I think through you, Madam Mayor, I'm trying to work out how many, what the figure of households in Christchurch, less Burton and Hearn, who will be, on whom this precept will fall. Because there was a figure quoted, if I remember rightly, at the time of the consultation two years ago now nearly, that the council tax precept on the would be a hundred and fifty pounds per a bandy property.
Councillor, would you like Mr Milner to look this up? In which case, you'll have to wait a few minutes, or is it that relevant to our debate?
I think we can let it pass. I think I can make that point without the information.
Yes, thank you, Mr Milner. I think we can leave that one. Is there any more debate? Oh, councillor Spittle, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The item, again, I have a question. It's on page thirty, it's regarding page thirty-eight, item three point seventeen. It won't be a surprise to other people, but it's to do with community halls that have not been mentioned actually in any of the appendices, appendices. As you, and I should have declared this as a pecuniary, not a pecuniary interest, but as an interest, I am treasurer of St Catherine's Hill Community Hall, that is, the freehold is owned by this council, as are other community halls, such as Muddford Wood. Will, I see that Druitt Hall is going possibly to the town council. Will, what will happen to the other community halls, please? That's one item I've got. Then also historic properties, there seems to be no mention of the old courthouse in Bridge Street, which is even older than the old town hall, which I believe... Bridge Street, which is even older than the old town hall, which I believe used to be used as, for ceremonial items, or possibly a court, which I would have thought would have been of interest to the new town council, which at the moment is commercially let, but it could possibly, because it's not always a successful let, in some ways I wonder whether it could be brought back and used for ceremonial occasions, but I'd like clarification on what would happen to that building. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Miss Besant.
If I could just comment on that, the courthouse wasn't mentioned as one of the assets to be transferred, but I think if it was to be considered, there might be issues with that, because there's an existing tenant of the property who has rights, and also it's an income generating property as well, so in that case it probably would fall outside the parameters of the sort of properties that we were actually considering, if that's helpful.
Thank you. I think that we were talking about the courthouse or St Catherine's?
No.
Which one were you talking about?
Apologies, I didn't turn my thing off. I talked on two, I was a bit naughty, I squeezed in two items. First of all, community halls, including St Catherine's Hill Community Hall, and then I also referred to the old courthouse, which I thought was in between tenancies, I wasn't appreciative, I didn't appreciate that it actually had a tenant, and I do thank Sue Besant for her answer so promptly.
Thank you councillor Spittle. Do we have any more speakers on this? Oh, sorry, about the community hall, oh right, thank you. I think the answer will be the same.
Right, I think probably the reason why they weren't considered was they are allowed out on tenancies, which are protected, land on protected tenancies, so it was felt that they had a degree of protection already anyway, and I think that was the reason why they weren't actually, I guess, considered as part of the list.
I may just come back, madam mayor. So the lease will be going to BCP?
Yes.
Yeah, not the town council, thank you.
Thank you councillor Spittle. Is there any more? Oh councillor Bunji, are you indicating? Thank you.
Just checking madam mayor, everybody's been asking questions, but you just, you said a little bit earlier, was there any, is that the end of any debate? But we haven't had any debate yet.
No, we're in questions at the moment. Is that the end of the questions then councillor Bunji? Would you like to, has anybody, would anybody like to open the debate? Yes councillor Bunji?
Thank you madam mayor. I do have some concerns, I'm happy with what has been transferred, but there are other items on here which we've been told we can't transfer, because they could be revenue earning or a future development, and it does put some of our institutions in this borough at risk. The rowing club for instance, although we're transferring the quants, we're not allowed to include the rowing club in that area, because it's cited as being possible strategic development. But I would hate to lose the rowing club, as Bournemouth lost their rowing club. We have several scout huts, the Sea Cadets Hut next to the rowing club is also excluded from this list, and it does concern me that, again, another community use for our youth could be at risk. Jumper's Common is excluded, although we say that is protected. Stampit Recreation Ground, the scout hut there, which again, is very important to the community, is excluded from being transferred to the town council because of the park business. Now, I don't know why the scout hut, as a little section, cannot be transferred, so I am concerned not with what is included for transfer of assets, but some of the items that are excluded, because it does affect some of our community activities possibly in the future. And the loss of any of the scout facilities, or the rowing club, or anything like that, would be a disaster for this borough, they've been there for years and years and have established across the country. So I do have concerns whether these can be properly protected. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. I think a lot of what you've talked about is actually in the document, Mr Jones, did you want to make an answer to this at all?
Madam mayor, you're actually in debate, so I think it's probably for members to debate, maybe the proposer to come back at the end, and I'm happy to answer or help assist if you need any further assistance.
Right, councillor Barth, are you in debate now?
Well, I'm slightly confused at the councillor's comments, because he actually sat on the task and finish group, where we did actually go through all of this and talk through all of the ones which are in the reports, so I'm quite confused, so his question is now to full council. I think that if we could possibly ask Sue, because we did go through all of these at some depth in the task and finish group, and we were assured on all of them that there were protections for all of those organisations through their leases and through the protections that they had, and we spent quite some time debating this in the task and finish group, where the councillor was part of that debate, but I think it might be worthwhile to actually have some clarification from Sue on that aspect of things.
Yes, I'd like to just clarify, when we're talking about strategic sites, we're talking about strategic sites, not strategic development sites, so I don't want to cause any exact anxiety around that angle. And as you say, we consider some of this, we consider many of these sites, and they have protections because they have existing tenancies which were protected. The problem with the Sea Cadets Hut, which I think you did mention, was I think it has no direct access onto the highway, so that would have been a sort of complicated site to actually transfer. I think probably you've answered it as well as this panel.
Thank you. Is there any more debate on this before we go to the vote? councillor Jameson.
Thank you madam mayor. Just to say, I was on the committee, and we did do a lot of work, and I just hope that people do support this, because it is important. It's been very interesting, and I think, I'm sure not only I've learnt a lot, I think Mr Jones must have learnt a tremendous amount of useless information, and probably be useless for the rest of your life, but it has been interesting, and I'm very happy I support this recommendation.
Thank you councillor Jameson. If there's no more debate, councillor Barth, oh councillor Jones?
Thank you, madam mayor. I attended as an observer, a number of members, a number of meetings of this task and finish group, and I would like to congratulate and to thank all the actual formal members for the work that they put in. This is one of the most important legacies that this council can give, and we've heard of the comments of the, that the stamp it part would be an important legacy. But a council is more than just a meeting room, and it says in here that this, although the battle to save the borough of Christchurch has been lost, the spirit of Christchurch, I hope, will be carried on by the new town council. And we can already see how this new council can pick up and can contribute very much to the life of the town, can safeguard its heritage, can safeguard its institutions and its merit, which is very important to a lot of people. I've heard what I hope isn't going to be a carping comment about the cost of it, because I'm quite sure that the new authority, no more than this authority, would like to be known as something that knows the price of everything and the value of nothing. I'll move on to one or two other points. For those shadow members of the town council, who, and also for the Highcliff Community or Neighbourhood Council, beg its pardon, as you move forward, you must be aware that I fear you are going to find that it is quite right that it will be as well to get as much safely transferred and sealed and written down before the new unitary authority comes into existence. Those members who attended, and those members of the public who saw the meeting of the shadow authority, will be aware that I, and councillor Slade from Poole, put forward a resolution which would have had the effect of suggesting to the, of committing the new shadow authority to working to helping the establishment of other town and parish councils, tier three coming into tier two councils. Unfortunately, the management of the new authority spoke very strongly against it, said we don't want divisions, we don't want original bits, we don't want little bits holding out, we want to be one big happy family. That of course may not be what everybody wants, and by setting up our town council and our neighbourhood council, we've guaranteed, I hope, that something will be carried forward, that as much as can be saved from the rec will be saved. One final point, it will of course be worth noting that the list, the sheet that we have here, does give the names of councillors who voted on a somewhat similar motion, and the figures were the same, twenty-five councillors supported my proposal, fifty-odd opposed it, and I'm very sorry to say that there were some members of this council who opposed the commitment to the new authority to support these new grassroots councils, who can make such a big contribution to the community life of an area. So I am supporting this, I hope all members will support it, and I hope that the new town council will stand as a legacy of the borough until it's coming again.
councillor Barth, do you wish to speak or sum up? Sum up, right, thank you. I think we've, councillor Bunji, you've already spoken twice, so I think, well, that's at my discretion then, you can just make it if it's brief.
It's just that it was mentioned about residents standing for election for the new towns and parish councils. There is actually, the joint residents organised a meeting on the 12th of February, where it's hoped that the chairman of the Dorset Parish Councils will attend, and it's an information evening for residents that are interested to come along, listen to what's involved, and ask questions of, not their councillors, but people that are already involved in parish councils. That's on the evening of the 12th of February at Druet Hall. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Nobbage, did I see you indicate to speak in the debate?
I just wanted to say that obviously, to thank the councillors who've spent so much time working on this, thank you very much for your diligence, because I think it's a comprehensive report, I think it has been decided, this is not retrievable, it's done, it's going to be happened. My plea is something different, because my own residents' association has just decided that the town council has got every opportunity to take its place, and they have closed down. And I just wish, and I just hope, that those residents who are involved in voluntary work of whatever type, especially those who are running residents' associations, can understand that the constraints and the controls associated with town councils and councils generally can be quite frustrating, because they are under limits and constitutions and goodness knows what. One person can speak about one debate at any one time, etc. And for them not to give up the whole process of residents' associations and being involved in their community in a far wider and more open scheme. I will be supporting this, but I'd also be appealing to all those residents' associations that we have left, don't give up because of this, continue and grow. Thank you madam mayor.
Have we any more speakers before councillor Barth sums up? Right councillor Barth, thank you.
Thank you, I think we've had a really good debate on this, and I'm very pleased that all councillors in our council supported the formation of the two councils, so I don't really recognise what has been said about certain councillors being against it, because we all supported it. So I'm very happy to propose as set out, and hope that we will attract as many local residents from all walks of life to actually apply and to put their names forward for election in May, and the process for that is documented on Dorset View, I believe, and if you can't find the process and you want to know any more about it, any of your local councillors can tell you how to look towards being a parish councillor, or a town councillor, or a neighbourhood councillor in our area. So thank you.
Right, thank you councillor Barth, and I, yes councillor?
When I started off in this council more years ago than I can remember, it was the convention that members began their speaking by acknowledging and by thanking the mayor or the chairman. My ears possibly getting a little deaf, but I think the last two or three speakers omitted to include that on horrific.
Thank you councillor Jones. I was going to say that I personally would like to thank all the members of the task and finish group who worked extremely hard, and as you can see, we've put a huge report together, but that wouldn't have happened without Mr Jones, and we have worked with Mr Jones to put this together, and I'm really glad that, as councillor Barth says, we all seem to be in favour. So members, can we go to the vote on this? All those in favour?
It's unanimous madam mayor.
Thank you members. All right, item 11, Burton neighbourhood plan, the designation of the neighbourhood area. I believe the leader is going to present this report.
Thank you madam mayor. I hope this report is not quite as taxing as the previous agenda items. We seek, the council seeks members' approval for the formal designation of the parish of Burton as a neighbourhood area. This is the first step in the parish council putting together a neighbourhood plan, and in order for them to progress that, the area needs to be formally designated. Other than that, it's set out in the report, the general process, and I appeal to members to support this agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you leader, and we have a seconder, I believe, councillor Jameson, the other councillor Jameson is seconding it, thank you. I was looking, sorry, I was looking in the wrong direction.
Not wishing to confuse you madam mayor.
Madam mayor, the request for a neighbourhood area came about because of the revision that was going forward on Christchurch Borough Council local plan, and this proposal has been, that's before you this evening, has been properly considered by Burton Parish Council, and the reason for doing that is so that it can ensure the protection of our local area green belt, the provision of suitable local housing numbers looking forward, and the provision of appropriate infrastructure to support those expansions, should they go ahead. So in order to achieve this, the parish council has started the local planning process, which I would urge an endorsement by Christchurch Borough Council and the agreement to properly designate... an endorsement by Christchurch Borough Council and the agreement to properly designate the area within the Burton Parish Council boundary, madam mayor, thank you.
Thank you councillor Jameson, does anybody wish to speak on this item? Councillor Nobbage?
Thank you madam mayor. Well, I'd like to congratulate Burton Parish Council on the development of the neighbourhood plan. I've often wondered why more areas haven't taken that opportunity and I understand that the expense associated with it. Just a question though, I think it was in 2003 that the previous parish council at Burton established that they had a requirement of 26 homes, new homes, affordable homes in their parish. Can I assume that that will be taken forward? Because I know they haven't been built yet, but can I take that, can I assume that will be taken forward under the new planning neighbourhood plan as an achievable goal?
Are you asking, yes, councillor Jameson, if you can answer this, please do.
Madam mayor, I'll attempt to answer it, but please don't hold me to a candle. It is my understanding that what was put forward in the last local plan, which is now subject to revision, is extant. If that answers your question. The issue is that there is a request to build some 500 plus further houses in Burton. And that is what prompted our need to look forward to our own neighbourhood plan so that we could support or challenge what was being put forward.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Bunji, you were first, sorry councillor Spittle.
It's really a question, madam mayor, I think this is an excellent idea and it will get my support. Is there any reason why the new town council and parish councils could not follow the same route in considering future developments within the town and within Highcliff? Perhaps the officers can answer that, thank you.
There's no reason why they couldn't have established.
No, I think there is no reason at all councillor, once they're established. Which is not yet, as far as I know.
You very much.
Councillor, councillor Spittle now, thank you.
As the chairman of Hearn Parish Council isn't here, could I, but as it is in my ward, I would, and I'm applying to the previous councillor, I would point out that Hearn Parish Council actually did a neighbourhood plan back in 2010. Actually, and so, but no doubt they were sure to be wishing to update it, thank you madam mayor.
Councillor Bath?
Thank you madam mayor, I think it's an excellent idea, I'm really pleased that Burton are going for this. I know that a referendum has to be held as part of the process and I just wanted to know, because obviously there is quite a substantial cost implication on that. Does that cost implication rest with the parish and therefore the precept of the parish to pay? Or does it rest with the council that it falls within?
Yes. Judith, could you answer that please?
Thank you madam mayor, I think I can answer that, it falls to the parish.
Sorry, could you give us some idea of that cost?
Microphone Judith.
It was about £10,000.
I've got two councillors waving, I think they want to come in, was it on that question councillor?
Madam mayor, I'll try, first of all councillor Spittle mentioned that Hearn Parish Council had a neighbourhood plan. They didn't, as far as I understand, they had a parish plan which is different to a neighbourhood plan. Secondly, the costs for the production of the neighbourhood plan are available, there is a grant available and it's my understanding that Burton Parish Council will apply for that grant and so therefore the costs will not fall on the parish providing that grant meets the costs. I trust I've got that right.
Thank you councillor Flug.
May I just thank the leader actually for advising that, I wasn't aware of the difference, thank you.
Thank you. Microphone, microphone. Right, now councillor Jameson, are you indicating to, were you coming?
Madam mayor, I think it's been done.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Did I?
I seem to have an empty list of those wishing to speak, but does anybody else wish to speak? Thank you, we're going to put the proposal to the vote then, all those in favour?
It's unanimous madam mayor.
Thank you members. Item 12. Housing and affordable.
Excuse me madam mayor, I do apologise but I have to leave, I'll have an appointment at eight o'clock.
Right, thank you councillor Nobbage. Thank you councillor Davis. Right, thank you members, we're back to item 12, housing and affordable housing SPD adoption. I believe councillor Geary is going to present this in the absence of councillor Phipps.
Thank you madam mayor, it's a pleasure to deputise for the councillor. This revised document has been out for consultation with only six comments received. The amendments are minor and mainly reflect the new national planning policy framework published in July 2018, as well as a few other corrections. All of the changes are modest, but we must keep this document up to date, secure, we support local plan policies. I propose therefore the recommendation as set out, thank you madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Geary, councillor Jones, are you seconding?
Thank you madam mayor, I seconded my rights.
Thank you councillor Jones. Members, does anybody wish to speak on this item? I think that is no. All right, can we put the proposal to the vote then, all those in favour?
It's unanimous madam mayor.
Thank you members. Item 13, this is alterations to the schedule of meetings for 2018 and 2019. I'm going to invite the leader to present this, thank you.
Thank you madam mayor. Happy to propose as set out, members will be aware that we have to ensure that all the meetings are signed off by the closer play, as they say, which will be the last meeting of this full council on Thursday the 28th of March. I would just point out one typographical error in 4.3 where it states the council meeting is Monday the 28th and it is actually Thursday the 28th. Thank you madam mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Mrs Jameson, you're seconding.
Thank you madam mayor, happy to second as set out.
Thank you, members, does anybody wish to speak on this item? Thank you, may we put this to the vote then, all those in favour?
It's unanimous madam mayor.
Thank you. On item 14, members, if you wish to ask a question in relation to the next two agenda items, you will have to indicate and then it will be necessary for our meeting to go into exempt session. So are there likely to be questions on these items? Item 15. Highcliff Castle Heritage Lottery funded project. Chief executive, I believe you're going to speak on this.
Thank you madam mayor, it falls to me under the constitution part three, responsibility for function, section A, paragraph 1.4. That a delegated urgent key decision has been made by the strategic director following consultation with the leader of the council and the chairman of the scrutiny and policy overview committee. And a copy of that urgent key decision is appended to your agenda this evening, thank you.
Thank you chief executive. And item 16, you're going to speak on Saxon Square Toilet refurbishment project.
Thank you madam mayor, once again, under the constitution part three, section A, paragraph 1.4, I have to inform you that a delegated urgent key decision has been made by the strategic director following consultation with the leader of the council and the chairman of the scrutiny and policy overview committee. And once again, a copy of that key decision is appended to your agenda, thank you madam mayor.
Thank you chief executive. Members, we've come to the end of the meeting. As it's a celebratory time of year, we have mince pies and wine for anybody who wishes to join me in the committee room. And that includes everybody in the room, so come along, thank you. Right, the meeting's closed.